It's 7:03, we'll call the meeting to order. All members are present, and we'll begin with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants 29, 29A, 30, 38, 31, 31A, 32, and 32A. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the out of 29, 29A, 30, 38, 31, 31A, 32, and 32A.
Seconded.
Being seconded, all in favor? Unanimous? We'll move to the approval of the minutes for January 11, 2010, and February 1, 2010. Do we have a motion?
Motion so moved. Seconded.
Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous? Our first appointment this evening is with Joseph Durani, and is regarding a public hearing relative to the request for a Class II garage license for Jamico USA Inc. for property located at 603 Main Street. Good evening, Mr. Durani. I see you have some green cards in your hand. While you're standing, we'll take what you have. Thank you, sir. And this is a public hearing which has been posted as such. If you could, sir, feel free to have a seat if you'd like. And we do have your application before us, and some recommendations of administrative personnel. Before we get to that, if you'd like to just devise the board of what you're requesting, we'll go from there.
We tried to renew the existing license, and we got the paperwork late, and we was late for two days. And because of that, they asked us to go in the front of the board.
Okay. I know that we have some recommendations here. Perhaps we could ask the manager what those recommendations are.
Yeah, let me also just clarify that the renewal paperwork was sent out when all the renewal paperwork was sent out to the address that is listed on the license. And there's actually 30 days in which to respond. And so it should not be interpreted from what was just said that the town was in any way negligent in providing the information. We have the following recommendations. We have a recommendation from the chief of police in opposition to the issuance of the Class II garage license. He writes to me, "After review of recent activities concerning 603 Main Street, the police department wishes to advise there is currently an investigation regarding multiple complaints of fraudulent repair services being conducted out of this establishment. There appear to be several customers who have been scammed out of money for auto repairs which were never actually completed. Emerging from the investigation, Monsur Labib Nemi, the subject of the investigation, has been taking money from his customers for repairs which he never performed nor had any intent on completing. There have been several instances of Mr. Nemi using customer vehicles for his own personal use without the owner's consent. Mr. Nemi was subleasing the garage space from Suhil Oijan and Walid Eldahaya." I apologize if I've mispronounced the names.
Eldahaya.
Eldahaya, "who were leasing the space from the property owner Dominic Saracino. The licensed applicant, Joseph Durani, appears to be linked to this address only on paper. It has been determined that Mr. Durani lives in Florida and more than likely is using the Class II garage license as a means of executing other business via car auctions in the southern states. Several attempts to reach Mr. Durani have been unsuccessful. Mr. Nemi has recently been arrested by this department on various criminal charges, and the case is still under investigation. For these reasons, the police department opposes the issuance of the Class II garage license to Joseph Durani of Jamico USA Inc." Signed by the police chief. From Inspector of Buildings Al Spalding, "On the application for the above-mentioned license to sell secondhand motor vehicles, the applicant states that his principal business is the buying and selling of secondhand motor vehicles. Under the Town of Wilmington zoning bylaw, Section 4.1.13, used vehicle sales in the general business district, auto repair and auto body shops may use the paved portion of their lot for the sale of used vehicles. Section 4 of the bylaw is for an accessory use to the principal use. The principal use is an auto repair shop. On January 27, 2010, I made a call to the applicant, Joseph Durani, who stated that he was in Tampa, Florida, and that he leased the bays to someone else. He does not employ the mechanic. He owns the lease, not the business. The intent of the bylaw was for the owner of the auto body or auto repair business to apply for a secondhand motor vehicle license, not the owner of the property. This applicant is not the owner of the auto repair business, therefore he does not meet the criteria of the bylaw, and a license should not be granted." From the fire chief, "At this time, it is unclear that all the conditions for a flannel liquids license have been complied with. Therefore, the Wilmington Fire Department recommends disapproval of the application at this time, and I note for the record that taxes are past due on this account, on this property."
Okay, I think that certainly we'll open it up to the board, and it being a public hearing, open it up to the audience, and then welcome you, Mr. Durani, to comment on anything. But the real gist of the problem from my perspective is that, on the face of the application itself, it indicates that the principal business is the buying and the selling of used vehicles, and that's just not what this particular bylaw is intended for. So that really is problematic for the board. Any other... Certainly, you have any comments in that regard? I'd give you the opportunity to do so.
First of all, we've been dealing with the police department and the fire department all last week, and we're still with them regarding the tenant who used to be there, which is Monsur Nemi. Okay? He's no longer over there. We said that everything was the police department and the fire department regarding from now on. He's not anymore exist there. We took over again, and he's not going to be no longer there. We are in the processing the purchase and sale with Saracino. And the deadline is going to be April 1st. So we're going to own the property and the business. Okay? So the fire department aware of everything we're doing. We're in contact with them every daily basis. The police department, the same thing. We have nothing to do with Monsur Nemi and whatever he was doing over there. We canceled his lease. He was tenant of well, month to month. He's no longer exist over there. Now, we step in to the location, and we're going to be operating it and own it within a couple months.
Okay. When you say "operating" and "owning it," you're referring to what kind of a... I understand you say owning the real estate.
Yes.
Owning the property. What kind of business do you intend to operate there?
Gas station, repair, and we're going to apply for the used car license.
It just seems to me that, given the application that's before us, and certainly we'll open it up to the board, but from the application before us, it seems as though that you would... You acknowledge in your application materials that, right now, your primary business is the sale of the used vehicles. And that's just not a conforming use under our zoning. Certainly, if all of these things that you described pan out relative to your purchase of the property, and, you know, you continue to operate, or you operate again at that location, you know, a kind of business that comports with the zoning bylaw, then, you know, maybe there's... That's a better time to look at it. But as it stands now, I'm not sure that you literally meet the requirements, and that's even putting aside the police and fire concerns and assuming that they would be addressed in time.
Okay.
I think that's part of the problem.
So, I understand, we'll wait till we buy the property, and after we start again, and we apply for everything as new, or what do you suggest?
Well, I can only speak for myself. I would say that, from my own standpoint, that would be a threshold, that you have to demonstrate to the board that you own and operate a going concern which is primarily an auto repair shop. And the whole idea of these licenses is to try and give folks who operate businesses like that the opportunity to make a little bit extra money selling some of the vehicles that they repair or work on that their customers don't want anymore. So, as a threshold, I'd say you have to make that case. And then beyond that, obviously, deal with some of the other concerns that have been articulated to the board, so I can buy the police and fire. But that's...
Could we clarify who this is? Because I don't think it's Joseph Durani, right?
No. On behalf of Joseph Durani, I'm Sohal Oijan. You mentioned my name.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm representative of Petro Group, Wilmington Patrol, the one has the lease with Saracino, and representing Jamico.
So if we checked on the Secretary of State's records for Jamico USA Inc., who's the officer and directors that run that corporation?
Joseph Durani. And we work together.
Okay.
And we have used car in different location, but because we wasn't operating this location, so we didn't have the license under our name. Now, we get back to take over the business, and we're buying the property.
And when you say "we," are you referring to that corporate entity or some other entity?
Petro Group Inc.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Is that building right now, our garage, it's vacant right now, correct?
Yeah.
No mechanic on duty? No gas pumps?
After the accident with Monsur and the police, we took over. We have the key. And now, we refix whatever damage is happening, and we're going to operate soon the gas pump.
But, see, the problem I have is, right now, it's a vacant business. There is no mechanic on duty. And therefore, what we're doing is issuing a used car license, I believe, to an individual that, in return, can either sell or lease that garage. Very shortly, possibly lease it. And until next year comes up, we wouldn't even know what the conditions of that lease would be. So I just think we're licensing first before that premises is in order. I think, you know, until it's up to standards with the fire department, until it's up to standards with the building inspector, and the police department, I can't see how I can vote on this license.
Anything else from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have to totally agree with the chairman. I think you're going to have to show us a little bit more good faith before we bring it to the next level. Not often does the police chief come out in opposition to a business. I mean, you have issues with the zoning officer, you have issues with other departments, and I'd have to obviously support the chief of police. It's a different entity. They conduct their own investigation. I don't know what's going on, and that's how it should be. I just sit there as a member giving out a license depending on department heads for input before my decision. And what... Once again, what is your name again now?
Sohal Oijan.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment. Obviously, I agree with the chairman, so I'm not going to be sort reporting this tonight, just to let you know. Number one. Number two, living in this community, I'm around. I was at the car wash last week, and I... There was cruisers down there, and it was a automobile... It was a DEP vehicle there as well. Other than this police investigation, is there ongoing issues of contamination in the area? Because there was a DEP vehicle there last week. I don't know if you can... Mr. Chairman, if you can comment on that.
What happened is, when the police showed up to talk to Monsur, okay, the health department showed up with him, and they find out he was sleeping there. And they saw a bin of oil, used oil. He used changed oil from car, and he put it in bin. So they want to make sure no contamination in it, so that's why they called the DEP. And we met with the DEP three times last week, and everything back to normal. And whatever requirement they want, we called company, and they met together in the site, and everything they want the DEP from us to do, it's been done, and they approve it.
All right, great. Once again, I agree with the chairman's comments. For us to go to the next level, we need to show some good faith to this board before we go any further. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
It's all been said, I think.
Questions or comments from the audience? All right, then, do we have a motion?
A motion to deny, correct?
Right.
All right, I'd make a motion that we deny the Class II garage license for Jamico USA Inc. of the property located at 603 Main Street.
I'll second. Being seconded, anything further? All in favor? Unanimous? Sorry, good luck getting some of those other things on track, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next appointment is with Robert J. Troy of the Stamp Committee. It's regarding a request for a one-day alcohol license for a dinner and dance to raise funds for the St. Thomas Appalachian Mountain Project to be held on Saturday, March 20, 2010, 6:30 p.m. to midnight at Villanova Hall. Good evening, Mr. Troy.
Good evening. My name is Bob Troy. I'm a parishioner at St. Thomas, a member of the Stamp Committee, which is St. Thomas Appalachian Mountain Project. Started about 13 years ago. We traveled down to Kentucky. The past four years, we've gone to the Biloxi area. The dance which we're planning to hold on March 20th is the biggest fundraiser that we have, and we're requesting a liquor license.
Okay. We have departmental recommendations from the management.
Mr. Chairman, the police chief, upon review, recommends approval of the one-day alcohol license based upon their understanding the purpose of the event is a fundraiser being held for the purposes stated by Mr. Troy on March 20th.
Questions or comments from the board?
Just one comment, if I may, and by way of full disclosure, I'm on the same committee with Mr. Troy for the St. Thomas Appalachian Mountain Project. So I just want everyone to be aware that I don't think I need to recuse because of the nature of the organization and its charitable intents, but I just wanted to share that.
Any other... Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I want to say that last year, we voted to approve this and to waive the fee. I don't know if anybody else remembers any better than I, but that may be something the board will want to consider, and include that one way or another with the motion. Questions or comments from the audience? Do we have a motion from the board?
I'd make a motion that we grant the one-day liquor license, and we waive the fee for that license from March 20, 2010, at the Villanova Hall on behalf of the St. Thomas Appalachian Mountain Project. If that's sufficient. Seconded.
Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Mr. Troy. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Our next scheduled appointment is with Joseph Mullins, the president of Wilmington Little League, and it's regarding a request to conduct a parade on Saturday, April 24, 2010, in the Town Common to Rotary Park in conjunction with opening day ceremonies. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Joe Mullins and Gary Frost from Wilmington Little League. Once again, we're seeking permission to host our opening day parade on April 24th to kick off our 2010 season. We're looking to, like last year, start the parade at the Fourth of July parking lot, march up Church Street, where we'll conduct opening day festivities at Rotary Park and get the season going.
Now, just looking at the time, I see on your cover sheet, okay, 9:30 a.m., but your rain date of April 25th is later on in the day for 1:30 p.m. Okay, great. Any questions or comments from the board?
I just want to say we took that last year in that parade. It was a great time. Probably the first time in a few years that you've had it, correct?
Over 20.
Over 20 years. So I appreciate you guys getting together and setting it up again. The kids really enjoyed it. All the kids... It was a good turnout. A lot of kids enjoyed it.
Yeah, it was great.
Do you have that Red Sox Yankees game in the afternoon after the parade? Isn't there a game?
Well, yeah, there's a game that the opening... There's always the opening day game that's highlighted. Last year, it was the... We started fit to have the Red Sox be part of that opening day game. And we decided that, since we're going to try to do this every year, we're going to rotate our team so everyone has an opportunity to play in that game. And this year, it will be the Major League Twins versus the Indians at 11 o'clock.
And we hope for good weather.
It will be good.
It will be good weather.
Of course.
All right. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to give Wilmington Little League permission for their parade on April 24th with the rain date of April 25th.
I'll second. Being seconded, anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Great. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks for restarting that tradition.
Our next agenda item is scheduled for 7:30 p.m. Not yet being 7:30, perhaps we can move to communications, and then we'll return to our regularly scheduled agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, we have correspondence that was provided initially to the attendees at the Mass Municipal Association Conference, and then to our local officials from Governor Patrick regarding his fiscal year 2011 budget proposal. Essentially, we're going over what I think the board is aware of already, and that is that the governor proposed funding local aid at more than $5.2 billion for the fiscal 2011 year. He indicated that, in terms of his commitment to education, he would be funding Chapter 70 at the highest level in the history of the Commonwealth at $4.048 billion, and that every district will be fully funded at foundation, and all districts will be held harmless to ensure funding is not less than the fiscal year 2010 levels. He also indicated that Chapter 70 amounts would be funded by the state and not with deferral stimulus funds. On the non-school or the municipal side, he is proposing funding the unrestricted general government aid at fiscal year 2010 levels of $936 million. If that happens, that means that there'd be no cut to the unrestricted local aid accounts. And the governor basically has provided information that we provided to you concerning the submission that he's making to the Joint Committee in Municipalities and Regional Government regarding a variety of ways in which he believes some of these programs can be funded, and ways in which the towns can also enjoy a particular relief if they adopt a certain of his proposals. Obviously, it all has to go through the legislature. And with that, I've provided to you information relative to local aid. As you know, in our budget discussion last week, we talked about the town's intention at this point to budget local aid on a revenue basis at 10% less than what the governor's numbers were last year. And we base that estimate on what has happened in the past, and the fact that the indications that we're getting from the legislature are that it is going to be very difficult to... for the governor to fund the local aid proposals that he's made without the addition of new taxes and a very optimistic feeling with regard to the stimulus funds that have not yet materialized. So there's just a comparison to you that's provided. That darkened column is what we are recommending. We've added to the column on the right the governor's proposed fiscal year 2011 numbers. So you can see, there is about a $1.7 million difference if the governor's proposal came forward. It's really... What we're showing you is, again, a comparison that was included in the budget at our last meeting in a discussion phase. This now puts it down in writing. You can see in Chapter 70, where we believe... Where we're estimating a little under $8.8 million, the governor is actually proposing $10.3 million. And where we're estimating, in terms of general municipal aid, $1,971, the governor is proposing a little over $200,000 more than that. So between those two numbers, the 1.5 additional on Chapter 70 and the 200 on municipal aid, that being the governor's numbers, that would bring us to the approximately $1.7 million differential. That's the delta between the estimate the town is using and going forward to the town meeting with, and the estimate that the governor's proposal includes for the town of Wilmington.
If you could... I know we had mentioned at the... During your budget presentation, that we'll make some agenda time to look at various alternatives in terms of cost savings or cutting on expenditures and increased revenues from different sources, if, in fact, the governor's proposal is even more optimistic than is being reported. Is that something you could have for the next meeting in February? And specifically, I'm thinking, too, there are a number of fees that this town has not elected to charge, and I'm not... Don't want anybody to get the wrong idea. I'm not suggesting that we should start. But I think it would be helpful for us to see what other revenue sources might be available, from user fees to local meals taxes and the like, and also take a look at what expenditures, if any, would be first if you had to cut from the budget. Is that something you can do this month? Is that something we should give you some more time on? When could we...
I can attempt to try to get this done by the next meeting, Mr. Chairman. If the information is not forthcoming, then I will let you know, and maybe we can go to the next meeting. But just so I understand, essentially, in the event the numbers... Our revenue estimates overestimate, you would want to know where additional revenue sources would come from, or what expenditures might be deferred.
And even if you're prepared to make recommendations at that point, maybe that's a little bit, you know, cart before the horse. But whatever thoughts you have on any of those means, I think, makes sense. I think we've all agreed and made the comments at the budget presentation that we appreciate the conservative revenue estimates and budgeting philosophy, but I think we all acknowledge that stimulus money is a little disconcerting how willingly the state is looking to throw that around in terms of their projections. So anything you could have would be helpful.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to add tedium to the project, and maybe it's not a necessary component of it. Would it be... It would be interesting for me, and maybe this can happen after the budget is completed, to see what other communities have for said fees, and what kind of fee structures they have for revenue sources. Maybe some of our neighboring towns that maybe are instituting these fee-based policies. I don't... You know, I'm not a big fan of the idea. But it's interesting to, you know, just vis-à-vis, where's Wilmington compared to our neighbors? I don't have a sense of what our neighbors are doing. It might be interesting to see what they're doing.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, too, if that information is readily available. Thank you. It's being a little after 7:30 now. We'll return to our regularly scheduled agenda items. Our 7:30 is scheduled with Vincent Cameron, the general manager of Reading Municipal Light Department, and Philip B. Pacino, secretary of Reading Municipal Light Department Board. And it's regarding an extension of the 20-year agreement. Gentlemen, I'd invite you to the front desk, and also make mention of the fact that Wilmington's representatives on the Citizens Advisory Board, the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board, Quincy Vale and George Hooper are both in attendance also. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. So, Saracino's supposed to be here, but he might have got hung up in traffic. So I didn't want to... We can just go on, I guess.
There's Phil.
There's Phil now. We just...
Thank you.
Ah, good.
How are you?
All right?
Go ahead.
All right. So, the 20-year agreement was initially signed back in 1990. And the agreement, which was signed by all four of the towns in the RMLD board, it settled the dispute between the town of Wilmington and the RMLD. The agreement addresses not only settling the dispute, which was 85-121, DPU, case 85-121, it also included the formation of the Citizens Advisory Board. And it set up town payment mechanism where the RMLD pays on an annual basis money to each one of the towns. And it's... It equates to 2% of our net plant, and each one of the towns payment... it's, it equates to 2% of our net plant, and each one of the town's payments is based on their kilowatt hour sales as ratio of the total kilowatt hour sales of the system. Essentially, that's what the 20-year agreement is. Why they call it a 20-year agreement? It's a 10-year notice for a 10-year out. It gets re, it gets extended once every 10 years. The last time it was extended was in 2000. The extension, some towns extend just through their selectmen meeting. The town of Wilmington, they extend, and this was in April 22, 2000, they went to the town meeting to get authorization for the selectmen to extend the agreement. So tonight, I called up Mr. Kyra and talked to him about the extension, and he thought it'd be a good idea just to come to the selectmen's meeting and to bring you up to date on the 20-year agreement, explain whatever I can, and answer any questions. And Phil, Phil is a commissioner, and Phil actually was one of the two people from the RMLD side that helped craft this agreement.
My name is Phil Pacino. I'm the senior member of the Light Commission, having served 23 years on the commission. I'm up for reelection again for another three-year term with the voters, see if they'll put me in, let's stay in office. I was actually one of the four members that actually negotiated, that worked on the agreement, the original, the original 20-year agreement. It was myself, the then General Manager Len Rucker, along with two gentlemen from up here in Wilmington, Jim Stewart and Bob Kane. Basically, there were four issues that Vinnie talked about. There was the streetlights, which was even among all the four towns. There was the above-the-line payment, which is the 2% that gets returned to each of the four towns based upon kilowatt usage. There was the representation, which is the formation of CAB, and there was also input upon major decisions was the four issues that were involved. And basically, through the CAB, they, the certain decisions, we have to wait 30 days and get their input before we can go forward, major power contracts, the operating budget, those types of items. I think the agreement has worked well. I mean, it's been around for 20 years. I kidded, I kidded Jim and Bob when, you know, when this is being negotiated, that it actually had been around for 20 years, and I actually have been around for 20 years. I kidded the two of them, you know, they've actually been around for 20 years, and I think it's worked well over the 20 years, and, you know, I think, you know, going forward, it will continue to work well.
Do we have any questions or comments from the Board, either substantively or procedurally?
I'll just make a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. I think the relationship has gone very well. I was one of the few people originally from day one thought it would be kind of foolish for the town to open up their own power company, and obviously, as time went on, I mean, there was some negotiation, give and take, and Jim Stewart and those individuals at the time, I think, did a good job. Alan Ames at the time was, I believe, serving there at that time, and I think the relationship has progressed, has gone well, and I would think, tend to think, listening to the town manager, as our chief fiscal officer, his recommendations as we go forward with that through you, Mr. Chairman, I think the relationship has gone good, and I would hope to continue that it would go, and it's a little bit fairer to Wilmington now because Wilmington does consume 60% of the power collectively. And in, just to give a little pat on the back to Reading Municipal Light, they do an outstanding job out there on the field. It might have been a little bit longer on Lower Street than I wish it would be, but other than that, I'm saying is, you know, the service has done well for the community, and Wilmington is a good, big customer of Reading Municipal Light, and that means something because we're a big buying power, and I think that means a lot when you go negotiate your contracts. And through you, Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear from the town manager, the chief fiscal officer, his recommendations as well, which I believe is going to be in a positive manner. But I'd like to hear from the manager.
I would agree at this point. I think we should have the documents looked at by town council, once the extension agreements are prepared, and I think we probably should do the same thing that we did last time, which as Mr. Cameron mentioned, we went to a town meeting, and what the town meeting did back in 2000 was authorize the selectmen to execute the extension for 10 years, and then the selectmen at a subsequent meeting voted based upon the recommendations of council and everyone else, and after having council look at the, look at the papers. So I think that, assuming everything is the same, I don't see any problems. I don't know whether or not the Board wants to add anything, whether there's any sweetness here for the, for the town, whether Reading Light has something that they want to give to the town of Wilmington. I'm sure if they had it in their pocket, they'd take it out. But other than that, I think it's been a good relationship, and I don't, I don't see it really as a problem, with the caveat that we should have council look at the papers. I would note, and you may have mentioned it, Vinnie, but the actual documents on the 20-year extension didn't get signed for three years later, I think.
Right.
June of 2003.
It didn't get memorialized.
For whatever reason.
But what we do is, we have a document now that, once all four towns vote to extend, will be around getting signatures from each one of the selectmen, assuming that it gets extended.
Can you tell us the status of the other three communities?
Yeah. The town of Reading voted in, on January 12, I believe, to extend.
Unanimously.
Unanimously. Town of North Reading.
Is that by, by selectmen or by town meeting?
Selectmen. And the town of North Reading, the selectmen voted to extend late of January. So two towns have voted to extend. I believe Wilmington is a town meeting, and I believe Linfield is also the same thing, town meeting. They have to get a town meeting authorization to extend.
Yeah, and I don't know that we have to. I'd leave that to you.
I don't remember.
And council.
I don't remember.
I think we did. I don't know whether or not there's a requirement to do that, but it's.
I don't recall if there was, if we thought that was a cautious route to go in terms of having the authority, or if we just wanted the imprimatur of town meeting. We'll revisit that.
And given the, it's unusual to have a contract that, for that long, and that, most contracts, and maybe this may be an exception, that go beyond five years require legislative approval, but this could be an exception. It must be if Reading and North Reading do it differently.
Parts of the 20-year agreement were, became statute. The town payment became statute. I think Representative Misselli led that charge to make sure that we were going to get the money out. I think there was some question there, but they made it statute, and I don't know if the other provisions, the CAB or the other provisions were made law, but the town payment was. And we'll be available for town meeting to come and talk, if you want us to come to town meeting, answer questions or whatever.
I note that in the records, there were questions at town meeting, and as a matter of fact, the records show there was a member of our advisory board who wasn't a member of the advisory board who raised some questions, actually offered an amendment at one point, and it was helpful at that time to have Mr. Rucker at the meeting. So it would be, it would be good. It's May 1st.
Oh, May 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would just, not necessarily to be answered now, but to the members of our CAB, if you have any comments over the course of the next several weeks as to whether or not the process needs to be tweaked. I haven't heard anything but positive feedback relative to CAB and the relationship with RMLD, but if you do think there are improvements there, certainly let us know. Anything else from the Board? Questions, comments from the audience while we're here? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. We'll be talking to you soon. With that, we can resume our communications.
Mr. Chairman, you have a communications from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. It's a legislative alert that came out, you know, right after the Governor's budget, indicating that the Governor's budget does level fund the main local aid accounts, and asks that contact be made with the legislative delegation for each community, asking that they protect local aid. I did happen to meet last week, actually, with Representative Murphy, Chairman of Houseways and Means, who indicated that they certainly would be doing their very best, but that they were looking at revenues very closely in order to make a, an ultimate determination of where they could fund local aid. But I did, I did feel as though it was a very positive meeting, and clearly Representative Murphy, Chairman Murphy has a good understanding of state government and certainly knows the importance of local aid, and expressed that during that meeting as well as at the MMA conference. The question now is whether or not they can make the numbers work, and that process is going to be ongoing, as you know. I know I've heard Representative Misselli indicate that he was going to do what he could to support the local aid numbers submitted by the Governor, and in speaking with Senator Tarr's office, he also will be as supportive as possible, but then also recognizes that the budget as proposed is based upon numbers that I'm quite certain, such as new tax, new tax proposals and additional stimulus funds. So I think that we're being well-served, at least by the three members of the legislative delegation, with regard to local aid. At this point, remains to be seen, you know, as the process envelops what else takes place. The Board has a memorandum from Shelley Newhouse, the Director of Public Health regarding the seasonal and H1N1 vaccination clinics, and it's a, it's really a very nice memorandum that she sent to both the Board of Selectmen and School Committee, thanking all of those who supported the work that went into making sure that the flu clinics were made available to as many Wilmington residents as possible. And she cites a number of those people here, the cooperation from all the school nurses, the superintendent of schools, the staff at the Board of Health Office, myself in my office, and all of the volunteers who assisted with the vaccination clinics. She was particularly praiseworthy of two individuals who really spearheaded some of the clinical aspects of the program, as Ms. Newhouse was the person responsible for the overall administration of the program, and that was our public health nurse Judy Bags and the school nurse leader, Doreen Crowe. And she goes on to mention all of the folks from her staff and others who did such a good job, and we certainly want to recognize them, and we've provided a copy of this memorandum to the press. I want to mention that Shelley Newhouse did an extraordinary job this year in making sure that the clinics went as well as they possibly could with over 2,800, this is that last count, I'm sure it's closing on 3,000 now, vaccines distributed in, during some very tenuous times in terms of getting the actual vaccines, so I think she deserves our gratitude as well. We have a letter from Virginia Carpenter-Ducette, Roberta Carpenter-Forrest, and Paul Carpenter, addressed to the Board with regard to the World War II Honor Roll Board that was at one time in front of the Old Town Hall, which now, as you know, is the Arts Center on Middle Sixth Avenue. She indicates that she believes that when the town hall was moved to Glanville, the Board was dismantled and stored somewhere, and no one seems to know. And goes on to say that she believes Wilmington is the only town that doesn't have a World War II honor roll in front of their town hall. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but believes that there should be something done, I guess, about, it's unclear, but I presume it's about restoring the sign or doing something in terms of recognizing World War II veterans with an honor roll in front of town hall. This matter was referred to the Director of Veteran Services for the town, Mr. Samaglia, and I think he's prepared to address the issue if it's okay with you, Mr. Jim.
By all means.
Yeah. Yeah, the town manager gave me a copy of that letter a couple of weeks ago, and I did contact George Hooper Jr. of Public Buildings and Carolyn Harris of the Historical Commission, and George informed me that his men searched all the basements of the buildings over the past three years, and to no avail, they never found the, the honor roll, which was made of wood with some glass front with the names on it. Also, in that letter, it was stated that they, somebody saw a picture in the town crier where you could read the names. I contacted the town crier, and that, that's not the case, there's no pictures where you could actually read all the names on it. I don't think, it, there's no disrespect that we don't have a honor roll up in our, in front of our town hall for World War II veterans. I think it's just because the, the honor roll is made of wood, and it rotted over time or whatever, and that seems to be the consensus of the people that I've talked to in town, that it might have just gotten in such disrepair that maybe, maybe it was thrown away. I am willing to work with anybody that wants to put a, an honor roll with names, it would be awfully, once you start doing memorials and honor rolls with names on it, it's kind of difficult because you don't want to leave anybody off, and I can pull a roster of people that served during World War II with a zip code from Wilmington. At the time, they joined the service, but there might have been people that joined elsewhere and then moved to Wilmington, so it's a whole different thing. But we have looked for that honor roll over the past three years, and it's just not around, Mr. Chairman.
Unfortunately, at least. Yes, Mr. O'Reilly.
My research on it, as I recall it, it began to fall apart, the names were falling off, and the last I heard, an old town employees had it dumped. I think that's pretty much what happened to it. But there are, I think, two other ones that, for World War II, and they regularly show up when they have the World War II display. I've looked at them, and I think pretty much the, the names are consistent. Maybe some of the younger guys from World War II.
There's two from Wilmington, there's two more honor rolls?
Two, two plaques. One, one is painted with gold on, on wood, and the other one is stick-on letters. And they were both in the Fourth of July building last time out.
What did you say, the last time out? How recently are you referring to?
During the summertime, there was a, there was a display over there, and pictures were taken. The, the painted one is about this size, and I think there are two other boards for the stick-on ones. I took pictures of them. And so they're, they're around, and I think if you talk with the lady who was in charge at the Hunter's, she'll know where they are.
We have a letter, a copy of a letter that was addressed to Patricia Muse, the Chair President of the Shawshing Valley Regional Vocational School District School Committee, from Catherine Craven, the Executive Director of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, reporting that their Board voted to invite Shawshing to collaborate with them in conducting a feasibility study, subject to an intensive pre-feasibility scoping agreement for the Shawshing Valley Regional Vocational High School. And the collaboration would be to look at a feasibility study phase, apparently to improve upon the particular school. It's not clear exactly what has been submitted, and I will attempt to find that out from Mr. Lyons, but they have apparently made a submission to the MSBA to do some work that would require their approval and their funding, and they have agreed to, at least at this point, conduct a feasibility study toward that end. Mr. Chairman, you have a letter that is also meant for anybody on the Board that the, this is from Joan Butler, the Executive Director of Minuteman Senior Services, indicating that the National March for Meals campaign is in full swing, and Minuteman Senior Services is requesting participation in making this annual event a true success in the community. They are contacting various leaders to see if they would be willing to become a part of an effort to deliver meals on a particular day, to volunteer, to represent the community in doing so. So if you're interested, if anybody's interested in doing that on behalf of the Board, I would be happy to. board, I would be happy to, um, provide your name, uh, to Ms. Butler and a member of the March for Meals program would call you and arrange for you to, uh, choose a particular day in which you're available to join the regular driver and deliver meals, uh, to one of the seniors in Wilmington. So any one of the members can just let me, let me know and, uh, I'd be glad to make those arrangements, uh, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Uh, we have a letter, um, that was addressed to me from Rita Boudreau, writing to inform us that she is resigning from the Scholarship Fund, regretfully resigning, uh, from the Scholarship Fund Committee for the town of Wilmington due to personal commitments. Um, and she has served on the committee for, uh, many years, and I did send a letter, as, as you know, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, to her on your behalf, thanking her for her, uh, past services. That means there's one vacancy on that, uh, committee. It's a five-member committee chaired by the Superintendent of Schools, there are three other members who remain on that committee, Robert Peterson, Carol King, and Suzanne Clarkin. Uh, this means there's one, uh, position. Where the board is, is, there's no immediacy in terms of, uh, making that appointment. I would recommend that, uh, an appointment be made, you know, at, at least by the end of March, so, in, in order for this person to participate in the April and May meetings that go on with regard to this committee.
How do appointing names, I'm sorry, how do people either show interest or how does one get appointed to that?
Uh, it's the Board of Selectmen's jurisdiction, they have, they're the appointing authority. Um, you know, it works in different ways. Sometimes people will, uh, you know, will hear about the vacancy as we've announced it today and express an interest, and other times members of the board will just bring a name forward, uh, of somebody who, who has experience in, in that area. It is, what you do is, um, it's, it's very intense, uh, during the period of evaluation. I mean, they receive multiple, uh, scholarship applications, and in this scholarship is unique, and that in addition to all of the information that has to be supplied regarding academic and extracurricular background and, uh, need, they also, um, require that there be a, a specific essay that is written, and then everything is looked at anonymously. Uh, and the, the people that serve on the, on the board right now have all been involved pretty much in educational-type, uh, activity, although it doesn't have to be that way. Past members have included, uh, principals, uh, and teachers who, who are principals and teachers out of town, um, former director of guidance, for example, so it's someone that is able to, you know, make judgments on scholarship applications and.
Thank you.
They also determine, um, in addition to who gets the scholarship, again, on an anonymous basis, they, they determine how much money is distributed based upon what we've raised during the year and the information that, that my office provides to them. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have, um, several pieces of correspondence from and to Gerald O'Reilly relative to the Board of Selectmen's vote at the meeting of December 14th, 2009, which was to approve an all-alcohol package store license for Robert McKinnn Jr. Uh, the letters go both from Mr. O'Reilly to the Secretary of State. Um, as the Secretary of State responded, um, town council obviously was involved in the initial determination in terms of the validity of the vote and, and indicated to the board that the, the vote that was taken, uh, was valid. Letters were sent by Mr. O'Reilly to Selectman McCoy for distribution, to Chairman Newhouse for distribution. Mr. Newhouse has, uh, offered a response and, um, Mr. O'Reilly has responded to, uh, Mr. Newhouse and then again wrote a, um, another letter and has provided these letters to, uh, different folks in the community, specifically Representative Misselli, Mario Marchesi, uh, and the editor of the town crier, in addition to the members of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, I don't know if you want me to get any more specific, the board has these letters.
Yeah, no, I mean, it.
Quite an information.
Certainly, I, certainly we'll recognize you in a moment, just to answer the manager's question. From my perspective, there were correspondence addressed to the Board of Selectmen, asked to be copied to the board pertaining to a matter that the board had addressed in public, so we put them on, so. Uh, but certainly, Mr. O'Reilly, if you'd like to.
Yes. Uh, correspondence noted, and none of it was addressed to the Board of Selectmen. I think they got curious copies, and that the rest of it was, as noted, personal, to and from correspondence, and I think that, that personal conversation, communications, are what you're going to be discussing tonight in the public forum with the Board of Selectmen's office, and, uh, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm not claiming what that was, but if anybody has any questions or comments, certainly speak up, otherwise I think they speak for themselves.
Um, the Massachusetts Municipal Association has provided a legislative alert regarding legislative breakfast meetings, uh, that have been scheduled. These are meetings that are scheduled periodically, some of you have attended in the past, um, as local officials are invited along with legislators to, um, a series of legislative breakfast meetings that the M A, M M A sponsors across the state. It's designed to bring legislators and municipal officials together, and in particular to discuss, in this instance, the issues surrounding the 2011 budget. Uh, the meetings will be held, um, on Fridays in February, uh, February 26th, March 5th, and March 12th. They begin at 8:00 a.m. and the program begins at 8:30 and concludes by 10:00. The meetings in, uh, on February 26th are in Palmer, Situate, and Westminster. The meeting in March 5th is in Burlington and in Lee, so the one in Burlington is probably one that would be most, uh, convenient for members of the board if they're interested. It is, uh, March 5th, the Burlington Town Hall, and then on March, uh, also, there's one in Montague. Doubt that you're interested in going out that way to Turner Falls, but on March 12th, there's, uh, one in Fall River, Rafton, and Sandwich. So the only one really, uh, close to the board, to the, to Wilmington is the one next door in Burlington on March 5th. Uh, I've provided you with the information and certainly you can register directly or you can call my office and we'll do it for you. And the board has correspondence both from Comcast and Verizon. Comcast writes about their new triple-play bundles, and, um, we bring this again to the attention of the, uh, public through the Board of Selectmen, although all of their, uh, subscribers will get this directly, and again, it is, uh, a, a part of what, uh, the cable providers must do, and that is to provide periodic updates to the, the licensing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen, and they do that, talking about their, uh, new, uh, bundle packages, um, and then Verizon, in this case, is writing, um, about their investment in the community, uh, on behalf of their customers and are noting that they have a strong record of corporate citizenship and that the Verizon Foundation contributed more than $4.1 million to nearly 300 Massachusetts nonprofit agencies over the past year. Uh, that concludes the, uh, regular business before the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Chairman.
Any further comments? Seeing none. Uh, new business or committee reports? That's it?
Yeah, well, I suppose I'll speak, uh, on behalf of the I-93 Tri-Town Task Force. The last meeting of that task force, there's two things kind of going concurrently, the task force and then the, the charrettes with regards to the form-based code. When I went to the last Tri-Town Task Force meetings on the 14th of January in Tewksbury, um, and lots of discussion was had, a presentation was made by, uh, one of the consultants, A E Com, uh, to discussing the widening of Route 93 and the installation of the new interchange there, um, with a target, uh, construction date now being moved to September, I believe, of 2016, so it's still on the radar screen for sure. One of the interchange, uh, schematics that is sort of being moved forward is this spewy, they call it, I just like to say that, um, single-point urban inter- interchange. Uh, it's a little bit unique, uh, it's not like the traditional cloverleaf interchanges we all know, uh, in our area. Uh, I can't describe it, uh, other than to say it, uh, it comes off the highway and there's a, a little bit of a rotary interchange, and that created, uh, some, some controversy at this particular meeting because this rotary interchange, uh, is in place for the potential for future west-side connection. Um, and, um, right now, Mass Highway, at least my interpretation of this was that Mass Highway had inferred from federal highway that they were potentially, um, they would potentially approve this configuration because they need to see a, uh, an access to local roads. So, uh, some of the folks, especially from Tewksbury, uh, in the South Street area, are adamant about there never being a west-side connection, uh, from this interchange. This is a live, dynamic conversation, there has not been any resolution, I just wanted to share that that is active conversation, and I think we can all expect that it will continue to be and we'll hear more about it, I'm sure. Uh, on the form-based code charrette, which was on January 21st in Andover, um, they broke the affected area into smaller sub-areas with the intent of creating a personality or a character for each of these districts, for lack of a better word, um, and categorizing them as open space, industrial or high-tech or life sciences-focused, retail, mixed use, which includes potential for residential and, uh, commercial, uh, and then there was also, especially relative to us, potentially hotel and conference area. Um, and this was the first, and we're, they're just starting to scratch the surface on putting some definition to this form-based code, which as we've come to learn is sort of a, a straw man, a guidebook, uh, for how development after the interchange is there, um, how development will be structured going forward for the next 50, 100 years. Uh, again, during that charrette, and, uh, the, uh, the vocal opposition to a west-side connection was, uh, was, was heard, and, um, again, I, I know that we, we collectively as the Tri-Towns will have to address that going forward. Um, the, the question as to whether or not, um, some of this work takes place, I think is going to hinge on, uh, how this conversation finalizes with regards to that South Street connection. So, just so that you're aware, um, I wanted to share those, some of that feedback, that's what I observed. Uh, all of this information in great volume and detail is available at, ready? Uh, www.I93TriTownInterchange.mhd.state.mA.us, uh, and there's multiple links on that website to other websites, so. There's a, a volume of information available and I encourage everyone to go see it. Rewind, play that again. That's all I have on that subject.
Thank you. Important dates.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just want to mention that the Finance Committee has been meeting and will continue to meet this week, uh, tomorrow, February 9th, at the Town Hall at 7:00 p.m. Among the departments that will be, um, on the agenda will be Elderly Services, the Historical Commission, and the Public Buildings Department. And on February 11th, Thursday, um, at 7:00 p.m., again in Room 9 here at the Town Hall, the departments that will be, um, on the agenda include Planning, Conservation, Town Clerk, the Building Inspector, Board of Appeals Office, and the, uh, Board of Health. And town offices are closed on Monday, February 15th in honor of the President's Day holiday.
All right, just to, uh, reiterate for anybody who might be listening at home that, uh, if you intend on going to town meeting and have any questions about any of those department budgets, certainly, uh, it'd be most helpful to attend the Finance Committee meetings if you could make it. We have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second.
Name the second, it all favor? Unanimous?